Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Jersey Village for Monday, August 16, 2021. Madam Secretary, do we have a quorum present?
Yes.
Great, thank you. That brings us to invocation and pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Sherri Shepherd.
Lord, we come to you today and we thank you for today and for all of your many blessings. We ask that you provide council guidance tonight as we make sound decisions for the city. Help us to discuss respectfully, being quick to listen and slow to speak. We ask that you watch over and protect our city and our country during these uncertain times. And bless our city staff, fire, and police for their service and commitment to this wonderful city. We appreciate all that they do to keep us safe. We ask all of this in your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember. That brings us to Item C, Citizens' Comments. Citizens who have signed a card and wish to speak to the City Council would be heard at this time. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, unless the subject matter of the comment is on the agenda, the city staff and city council members are prevented from discussing the subject and may respond only with statements of factual information or existing policy. Citizens are limited to five minutes for their comments to the City Council. One thing I will say is that we have both citizen comments tonight and there's also a public hearing on the tax rate that is proposed tonight. If I call your name for the public comment and you prefer to wait until the public hearing, which is a little bit later, please let me know. As of right now, I only have one card from each person. The first card I have is from Simon Hughes.
I'd like to the tax hearing.
Got it, all right. The next card I have is for, from Mark Malloy.
My name's Mark Malloy and I live at 7803 Hamilton Circle and I'm a past City Council member of the City of Jersey Village, Texas. You know, I'm here to make my citizens' comments for the '06, '16, 2021 regular session City Council meeting. Please make my verbal comments and written documents given to the City Secretary a permanent record of this meeting. I've come tonight to talk to the current Jersey Village government and city manager about the proposed 2021-2022 city budget. I want to ask these individuals how they think that the Jersey Village taxpayers are every year expected to pay more of their personal living expense dollars to the Jersey Village government instead of being able to keep them for their personal needs. Do you, the government, the Jersey Village government and city manager, think that the taxpayers of Jersey Village, Texas, get a pay raise every year to be able to afford to give the City of Jersey Village more of their money? If you think that to be true, then you do not live in the real world. I want to know how you think that the JV taxpayers are going to continue to pay every year continual increases in city employees' salaries, wages, pensions, and healthcare costs when most of the JV taxpayers do not receive these same living expense increases? I want to know how the JV government thinks that the JV taxpayers are going to be able to pay for more and more newly added city employee positions that increases the total number of city employees? I would like for the JV government to tell the JV taxpayers during this meeting what the total increase in all city employees' salaries, wages, city-matched city-employee pension contributions, and city-covered city-employee healthcare premium costs from the 2020-2021 budget to the 2021-22 Jersey Village proposed budget that will be voted on at tonight's City Council meeting and approved. Will you tell the JV taxpayers during this meeting before you vote to approve the 2021-2022 Jersey Village city budget the answer to the above question that I'm asking you? The Jersey Village government is persistently trying to tell the JV taxpayers that the Jersey Meadows Municipal Golf Course makes a profit less its expenses. I am telling the citizens of Jersey Village, Texas, that it does not. The Jersey Village government is allocating funds from the Capital Improvements Fund and the General Fund during the 2021-2022 city budget to pay for golf course expenses that will not be covered by golf course operations revenue. The list of Capital Improvements Fund-funded projects for the golf course during the 2021-2022 budget year are new tee signs and markers for $31,500, new driving range nets for $60,000, new golf course fencing all along Real Grand Street for $92,000. There are also supplemental expenditures that will be paid by the Capital Improvements Fund in the amount of $63,125, which comes to a total of $246,625. The amount, the General Fund revenue, that will be spent to cover the original... The original debt service payments, principal and interest payments for the original purchase of the golf course for the Jersey Village 2021-2022 budget year will be $527,460. The total of the Jersey Village revenue that did not come from profit made through the golf course operations but was spent on the golf course is $774,085. These are just some of, but not all of, the golf course expenses that are not paid for by the golf course through its day-to-day operations, and yet, the JV government wants the JV taxpayers to pay an estimated $7.5 million for a new golf course clubhouse and convention center. Do you, the Jersey Village taxpayers, think this will be a good investment of your tax dollars? The Jersey Village taxpayers need to get an independent certified public accountant to go over all years of the Jersey Meadows Golf Course Operations financials since the JV government purchased the golf course with certificates of obligation in the budget year 1999-2000.
That's time, Mark. Thank you. The next comment card I have is from Michael Stenbridge.
I'd like to speak on the taxpayer's agenda.
The next person I have speaking, and I apologize, is it Augie Gentelucci?
It's the public board of the...
So, the public hearing? The next comment card I have is from Eric A. Now.
Eric A. Now, at 15601 Singapore Lane. My script is not so scripted this time, so forgive me. So, I'm still new, and I got the City Council packet link. My first question was, is why is it over 300 pages long? It seemed really, really long. Again, I'm new and I'll probably work my way through it at some point, maybe it's repeating, but I was just surprised how long it was. I know it's a lot of info. The golf club is clearly a big topic of conversation, and I'm kind of in agreement with delaying updates for it, but I was wondering if there isn't something we can do to, as it was told to me, "pre-fy" the club for minimal expenses to sort of abate the two years of waiting before rebuild? Carpet, coat of paint, something like that, I don't know. I saw that there's a new wide-format scanner printer on, to be decided. I was wondering if y'all do get it, if I could make a printout of my property plot large size? That way I can find all my water lines and whatnot when people come digging around in my backyard? There's a lot of work that seems to be being done on the streets. Recently, there was some cabling that was done down Senate Avenue, and as I found out that some companies do not need to inform JV about scheduled work? And that's fine, I get that. I was just wondering, for work that's being scheduled by JV for JV, is there a place on the website or somewhere where I can go to see, like, if I see this happening on such-and-such street, I know construction or a cone or something being torn up? Just, I'm curious to know, where can I go to find information about it and see the latest status updates? Maybe I'm missing it, I haven't seen it yet. Lastly, I'd like to give thanks on three things. So, recently, there was a suspicious-looking truck parked on our side of the street in the wrong direction, unmarked, and we took notice and were a bit taken aback, so we called the police to have them come out and investigate. They responded, like, within 30 seconds. They did follow the vehicle, and they did talk to the people and find out that they were legitimate contractors with AT&amp;T, but they had no markings whatsoever. And they did then come into our yard and do some fiber-optic line cable work, something or another. But I want to give thanks to the police for their very, very rapid response. Thank you to Drew Austin for your email that you send out. That is incredibly helpful and incredibly informative for me, and I just want, I know how much time that takes to put together, and I appreciate you sending that and informing us on that. Incredible information for the residents, whether they get it or not. And also to Mayor Bobby Warren, your letter and the water bill. While the water bill is never fun, your letters always are, and they're, again, also informative and well-written, and I do appreciate the expense it does take to inform us. That's all I have to say for today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric. The next card I have is from Nancy Yetter.
Good evening. My name's Nancy Yetter. I live at 16121 Capri. I'm totally unscripted, and we'll have to really watch the five-minute thing. Last month, someone published a map of the construction that is going on Wall Street, Capri, Carlsbad, which we have waited, you know, very excitedly about. In my own, you know, fault, I looked at it and looked at it and noticed that my street of Capri, I live between Carlsbad and the church, so the cul-de-sac block. The construction only went down five houses, which was a surprise to me and seemed to be a surprise to most of my neighbors. So, I called the city and talked to Harry Ward and asked him why it stopped right there. And he said, "Well, these plans were done out of house," and so he had to call the engineer that did them, and he called me back the same day, and said that they stopped there because the last half of the block drains to the east. Well, the east is towards the church, and it does not drain to the east at all, ever. The cul-de-sac kind of forms a bowl. You have to walk uphill to get to the sidewalk and then through the fence and over a curb. It just doesn't. I mean, let's, you just look at it and tell it doesn't, and we all know it doesn't. So, I called Harry again, and this time he gave the engineer my number, and I actually talked to him, and he and Harry both talked about the other aspects of the improvements and how working together, you know, the berm and this and that and the lift station, hopefully, and I do hope it will be sufficient and work, but never have an issue with it again. But I felt like it was important to notify, and I've talked to Bobby. I can't imagine how a PE engineer came up with that theory. It just, it does not. The water drains to the west, to right now, where there's only one set of gutters down by my house drains. They are putting in one more set, but that's it. So, down the road, if something doesn't go the way we hope it does, I want to be able to come back to the government and say, "Okay, they tried it, FEMA tried it, they paid for it, didn't do so well, let's fix it the right way and do it again." Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Next card I have is from Bob Cabala.
You said my name correctly, thank you. Okay, 16001 is my address on Lakeview Drive. I'm at Senate and Lakeview intersection. Been here about eight years. This is my second time to ever appear. My issue is on trust, because I've heard so many neighbors and what I'm seeing in print and a few people I've talked to, trust seems to be missing in this city, and it was a great choice my wife and I made eight years ago. So, I'm just gonna start off, like, some voters, some voters, want their elected officials to make decisions based on what the elected officials believe to be the best interest for the City of Jersey Village. Sounds pretty good, but I rephrase that. Elected officials are independent, therefore given free rein to govern. Still not bad. Other voters want their elected officials to make decisions based on what citizens believe is the best. So, the difference here is what the councilperson, mayor, and elected officials, what y'all believe is best, or what the voters voted on. If I rephrase my statement, it's elected officials are to achieve the goals as agreed upon by voters. In other words, the major projects or decisions made by voters, and then y'all work to achieve that goal. So, I'm curious, I don't know how you would do it, Mr. Mayor, I don't know how you're gonna do this, but is there some way you can describe that in just a short paragraph in your next monthly letter? Maybe, but I'd like you to at least think about it. The other thing for the councilmembers is, before you make a major decision tonight on some of these tax problems that are looming in the future, I want to know if y'all think y'all should be independent or should y'all be servants to the voters? And I know there needs to be a compromise, because it just won't work unless the will of the voters is announced and y'all try to follow up and accomplish those goals. So, again, we get back to the word "trust," and I'm hoping, I was hoping for a bigger audience, that we get rebooted on that. In other words, let's move forward, and that's enough. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bob. Not to get too far afield, but I will say, if you want to hear a very interesting quotation or speech on that topic, if you're familiar with Edmund Burke, fairly famous conservative philosopher, was a member of Parliament in the UK back around the time of the American Revolution, search his speech to the electors at Bristol, and he speaks to that very topic. It's very widely quoted on that subject.
Okay, okay, thank you.
The next card I have is from Judy Yarbury.
I'll tag you here.
To the public hearing? Okay, no problem. Well, then, the last card I have for the public comments is Jennifer McCray.
Hello, my name's Jen McCray, and I've lived here, actually, 11 years this past week. I live on Lakeview in a red brick one-story. We are frequently out in our front yards, and at any time, if anybody here or even listening wants to stop by, help yourself, feel free. I mean, like, when we're there, if we're not, that's weird. Anyways, I am here tonight because James McDonald cannot make it, and he has asked me to help out with the Citizen of the Month award for the evening. And so, I am here because it's, the person that has been chosen is actually somebody that I nominated. Give me just a second. Okay, so, the winner for this month's apple fritter from Mr. Donut is Sharon Webb. Sharon Webb has been a longtime member of Jersey Village. She raised her daughters here, and they both graduated from JVHS around, oh my God, I'm getting choked up, this is so silly. Around eight and a half years ago, Sharon went above and beyond to help a neighbor she barely knew. I went into preterm labor at 26 weeks with my son and was placed on bedrest with a nine-month-old that was already walking and a husband that was losing his mind. So, she found out about it, and I didn't even really know her, but she found out about it and took it upon herself to feed my family for the next six weeks, either on her own volition, which, I mean, I love Sharon, but that meant takeout, either by Sharon, by herself, or by coordinating with her various friends and contacts she has in Jersey Village. It was some of my first contact with many of the people I know here in Jersey Village, and for that, I'll be forever grateful. That was the start of a friendship that, to this day, I have to say that I've witnessed her continued selfless acts throughout JV in many different ways. She checks in on her elderly neighbors, she takes them to doctor's visits, she has rescued two dogs that were habitually roaming the streets of Jersey Village. One of them she actually captured with a ribeye on her lap in her backyard. Like, no joke. She has paid for pool passes for people that couldn't afford them, and she has, she sponsored numerous teachers at post elementary anonymously, so they never even knew who gave them the supplies, the stuff they'd been asking for. You can always guarantee that she'll have good candy at Halloween and a really cool lights display at Christmas. So, I believe that Sharon epitomizes the concept of a good citizen of Jersey Village, and that's why she was chosen this month for August. It does entitle her to not only our admiration, but a free apple fritter, even though I personally prefer the old-fashioned chocolate-glazed thing. So, anyways, thank you very much. And the last comment I'd just like to make is, if you haven't gotten vaccinated, I would truly appreciate that you did, so that we can stop the nonsense. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jen, that is outstanding. Okay, that finishes public comment for this part. So, that brings us to Item D, Fiscal 2021-2022 Municipal Budget and Tax Rate Items. The first item is discuss and to take appropriate action concerning any final changes to the proposed 2021-2022 municipal budget. Isabel Cado, Finance Director.
Yes, Mayor, included in the package, we put the different items that were changed since we met back in July, so if anybody have a question about it.
Any questions for Isabel from council? If there are none, I don't, is this, so there is...
I motion to accept the changes.
Is there a second?
No.
Derek, is that a second? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor? All those against? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Next item on the agenda, Consider Ordinance Number 2021-33, Adopting the City of Jersey Village Municipal Budget for Fiscal Year 2021-2022. And, one moment, I think I have a script for that. I do, okay, good, I just want to make sure. Any discussion on this particular item? If there is no discussion, I have a script, so...
No, I was gonna make a motion before she did, and I missed it, but the, I was gonna move that we remove the $20 million bond, we remove the city hall and the clubhouse, because I don't agree with those who want to have a vote on it, but...
Are you making a motion?
So, are we going back to the item before?
No, we already voted on that, so it's over with. I would make a motion that we approve Ordinance 2021-33 with the amendment of changing the budget on line items in the capital improvement section to remove the $20 million bond, the city hall, reduce the city hall budget from $10 million to the original from last year, and reduce the clubhouse back to zero with the intent of doing it next year.
If I can make a friendly suggestion on that, just to keep clean things up, because we've got some record votes that we have to do, can we, can we make that, can we consider that motion as a motion to amend the ordinance that would then be voted on later? In other words, we vote first on that amendment and then have a record vote on the actual, whatever the end result is?
Yeah, that's, yeah, I would move to amend the ordinance as I described. That's what I was intending to do.
Gotcha. I know we don't ordinarily do that, but in this case, I think it's probably gonna be cleaner. So, we have a motion to amend the proposed ordinance as stated by the councilmember.
I need the second item, it was 20 million for the...
So, I'm...
The second item.
I amend the ordinance to remove the $20 million bond from the capital improvements revenue and remove the clubhouse from the capital improvement expenditures, and then reduce the city hall back to its original amount from last year's budget. It's just, just shy of 8 million.
So, I thought the whole reason that we put the $20 million bond in the budget was to allow for the citizens to vote on what they wanted.
That was why you decided to do that. That's why you decided, from my understanding, when we talked about it, was you were willing to go with the bond because you wanted to give it to the citizens. When we talked about it, I made it very clear that we're not to the point of sending it to the citizens, because this is a bad idea, and we can afford to do the clubhouse by maneuvering funds in a way we could make it happen in this budget, but we chose not to. We were already given the advice from our auditors that refinancing our debt is not, is not efficient unless we add more debt. And so, we are refinancing it, but we're adding a lot more debt that we don't need to do. We're adding $8 million in interest that we don't need to do right now.
But Isabel, if I'm not mistaken, that is also, was suggested in order for us to maintain our bond rating. Was that correct?
We maintain the bond rate if we have, when we have debt in the books. After the debt, I'll clean out, then there's no bond rating, because we pay off our debt.
I do recall that we, that was a question that came up during the budget discussion, and the clarification was that it would not harm our bond rating if we did not carry debt. That ultimately what would happen would be, if in the future the city were debt-free and wanted to look at issuing bonds, then at that point, we would ask for a rating to be established based on the factors that exist at that time, which would not include the fact, actually, being debt-free probably would be helpful with the bond rating. It would be things such as, sort of, the, you know, the reserve, our tax base, things of that nature.
Yeah, he made it very clear that our tax rate, our debt rating does not work the same way that your personal credit score works, where you need to maintain debt and make regular payments to maintain your credit rating, otherwise, after, within a year, two years, it would, it would go down. The city's rating is based on our ability to pay, not that we have paid.
I'm still in favor of letting the citizens decide.
To be clear, we do have...
My understanding, my understanding was, within, in our budget discussions, is that it was proposed 20 million, but we were discovering ways to lower that amount, and we still have time to change it, even though we approved this budget. So, I'm, I would prefer to wait for the next meeting where we do discuss it and make our minds up then.
To that end, though, if we chose and wanted to pursue a bond later on, we could still add that to the budget, we could still add the golf course clubhouse to the capital improvements budget, we could raise the city hall budget. If we choose to pursue the avenue of council, council...
That's fine, but he's wanting to take the clubhouse out of the budget and push it down the road, kick the can again, and he's also wanting to lower the amount for city hall, and I can't agree with that at all.
So there are ways we can make the clubhouse work, and if you're willing to drop the bond in City Hall but keep the clubhouse, then I can amend my motion. But City Hall, we have yet to see any land deals close. Even as of today, nothing has closed.
So just to be clear, we have a motion, but we do not yet have a second? Is there a second to that motion? Keeping in mind, I was just gonna say, keeping in mind, this is only on whether or not to accept the proposed amendment to the proposed ordinance, it's not on the ordinance itself quite yet. Councilmember Wasson, did you have a...
I'll second that amendment by Councilmember Singleton for the amendment.
Okay. We have a second. Is there any further discussion before we move to a vote on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of amending the proposed ordinance as stated by Councilmember All of those against? Any abstentions? The motion fails. Do we have any further motions, ancillary motions, before we move on to a motion on the question, so to speak?
No. I move that we approve Ordinance 2021-33, adopting the municipal budget for fiscal year 2021 to 2022.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I will now call upon each council member by name to take the record vote. Once your name is called, answer "aye" to signify your approval of the motion, or nay to signify your disapproval. Councilmember Wasson, state your vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Shepherd, state your vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchum, state your vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton, state your vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Wubenhurst, state your vote. The motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is conduct a separate vote to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the 2021-2022 budget adopted on August 16, 2021. Any discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor, this, just have a question about the order on the agenda. This occurs, and then we have a separate vote later on, but in between, we have a public hearing. Can you explain, or can I get guidance on that?
Sure, and I had the same question after looking at these items. My understanding is that we are actually required to take these votes before we formally adopt the tax rate, and it's the adoption of the tax rate that actually requires the public hearing, and so that's the why it was set in that order. You know, sometimes the legislature likes to give us some strange obstacles to jump through without really thinking through how this all works on the local level, so here we are. Lori, did you have anything to add on that one?
That's correct, what you explained.
All right. And just to be clear, the, I know there is some confusion online over the weekend. I can tell you that there's nothing more relaxing on a nice weekend to sit at a computer and hammer out numerous responses to many, many rightfully confused citizens. There was a notice that went out that said we were raising a tax rate, raising our property tax rate to about 88.8 cents per $100 valuation, and without going into the really boring details, essentially, some of the changes in state law have made it to where we are required to put out certain notices, sometimes before we even have really solid numbers as to what the property valuations are going to be for the city. So if you can imagine, it's very difficult to set a rate when you don't know what, for sure, what that rate is going to be calculated against. And so the notice that went out was set based on the max rate that would be allowed without having to go to an election. That did not mean that that was the rate that we were going to adopt. The budget that we just passed considers a rate of 7.425, seventy, basically almost 75 cents per $100 valuation, which up until last year was the rate that we had in place for, I think, about 10 years or so. So in case anyone was worried that we were causing taxes to go up by double-digit percentages, that's not the case. In fact, this one, this proposed rate would only have the rate go up, would actually cause an increase in revenue of 3.79%, which is less than what the projected inflation rate is going to be over the next 12 months. So hopefully, that will assuage some concerns that are out there. Any further discussion before we move on, or before we make a motion on this? If not, I would entertain a motion at this time.
Motion to approve Item 3.
To be clear, Lori, do we need to have it in a specific form?
The motion would be to ratify the property tax increase of 3.79% reflected in the newly adopted municipal budget for fiscal year 2021-2022.
Is that your motion, Gary? No, you can just say yes, I make that motion.
So move.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, there's a record vote. I will now call upon each council member by name to take the record vote. Once your name is called, signify aye, answer aye to signify your approval of the motion, or nay to signify your disapproval. Councilmember Wasson, state your vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Shepherd, state your vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchum, state your vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton, state your vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Wubenhurst, state your vote. The motion carries. This now brings us to a public hearing on the proposed tax rate. I will now call to order this public hearing on the tax rate increase. Everyone desiring to speak at this hearing should complete a public hearing comment card and present the card to the city secretary. The purpose of the public hearing is to give all interested persons the right to express support for or opposition to the proposed tax rate of .888379 per $100, a rate that exceeds the lower of the voter approval rate or the no new revenue rate. I would now like to request the city finance director, Isabel Cato, to summarize the subject of this public hearing.
Just talk from here. Okay, so we base the calculation for the city of Jersey Village taxes by, by the 35 estimate value of $1,001,058,859,7. Based on the historical asset valuation, the proper values of the city has been steady. Our current rate right now for fiscal year, for fiscal year 2021 is .723466. The non-new revenue rate was, which it was previously called effective tax rate is .691336. The voter approval rate, which was before called rollback tax rate, is .88379. The de minimis rate, which is the rate equal to the sum of the non-new revenue rate, revenue maintenance and operation rate that will raise 500,000, and the current debt rate for the taxing unit, this rate will be .743566, which is less more than the proposed .7425. Our historical rate that the city used for the last, over the last 10 years was .7425. In addition, the debt service rate, which we have to use before we do any calculation, is .131562. The explanation of the non-new revenue rate is like a benchmark tax rate, since it is generally equal to previous year taxes divided by the current taxable value of properties that were also on the tax roll on the previous year. The voter approval rate provides cities and counties with about the same amount of tax revenue it spent the previous years for the day-to-day operation, plus extra 3.5% for operations and sufficient funds to pay debts in the coming year. The property tax rate tables, we don't have that table, but since for the last 10 years, we have a rate of .7425. Based on the .7425, they serve breakdown, we have to break down the .7425 by the operation and maintenance tax, tax rate, and the debt service rate. Also, the city of Jersey Village has two outstanding debt obligations. General obligation refunding bond series 2012 with a principal payment of $975,000 and interest of $68,325, with a total of $1,043,325 for fiscal year 2122, and general obligation refunding bond series 2016 with principal payments of $315,000 and interest payment of $168,525, with a total of $483,525 for fiscal year 2122. The total amount standing in our debt as of fiscal year 2122 is for bond, for general obligation refunding bond series 2012 is $2,903,825, and the general obligation refunding bond series 2016, the outstanding balance is $6,438,525. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Okay, thank you, Isabel. We're gonna go ahead and start with, the first card I have for the public hearing is from Simon Hughes.
Simon Hughes, 15409 Lakeview. Couple of things. Obviously, I'm the guy who did a couple of posts over the weekend based upon exactly what was published by this city. Notice of public hearing on tax rate increase, verbatim, proposed tax rate of .8839. Now, I know that, you know, James, and I'm sorry about your grandmother, and that interrupted your situation with her passing, but to say that I incited something is completely wrong. What I did was simply communicate to the residents of this city the same communications that were posted on the website. A proposed tax rate is just that, it's not an unambiguous term, it's not, it's not an ambiguous term, rather. If, in this situation, and Bobby, I think you alluded to the fact that the proposed tax rate is something that statutorily required to be stated as the maximum rate that the city could increase it without voter approval. And if that's true, and that's perfectly fine, if that's the case, and the intended tax rate to be adopted is, as you say, and what was included in the budget, then it's incumbent upon the city to explain to the residents, hey, we've got a statutory notice that says proposed tax rate at .888379, but here's our intention is to adopt a, a different tax rate. That would have avoided a lot of the confusion that occurred here, but the confusion is on the city, it's, it's of the city's own making. And I'll call your attention to the nine-page little, sort of a PowerPoint-looking thing that y'all put together, posted on the website on August 4th as a notice of supplemental notice of hearing, and again, that goes into details with valuations, and everything is based on the .88379. Bottom line is, you could have included in that notice, which was certainly not a statutory notice, an explanation, drop a footnote, say something, and say, no, 88379 is not the rate we're adopting, we're adopting a different rate. Okay, end of that part. Moving on, you've adopted a tax rate, and you've required increasing the tax rate for over last year. I have voiced my concern to each of you via email, and Drew, I appreciate you responding to me, and Bobby, I appreciate you responding to me, and the others who failed to respond to me. James, I understand your situation, you had a lot going on this weekend, but the others, you owe your constituency an obligation to at least acknowledge receiving a damn email. If I say I'm opposed to the tax rate, I'm opposed to the budget, I'm opposed to an increase, then at least pay me the courtesy of saying, I received it, I'd like to talk to you about it, or something. I received nothing from some of you, Michelle, Sheri, and Gary, and I would appreciate it, and I think the residents of this town would appreciate it, that when they take the time to review information and give you input, that y'all respond. That's your responsibility, and don't tell me it's a voluntary position, because if you can't do it, don't volunteer. Now, with respect to the tax rate, I'm opposed to the tax rate being increased for the primary reason that this city council has demonstrated over the last 10 years, and particularly in the last three years, a propensity to waste money. Exhibit A is the $8.2 million sunk in the ground on the south side of 290 that we were supposed to flip and sell, and Collaborate was going to buy, and that hasn't happened back in May. Great Fanfare, Collaborate's going to be breaking ground in June, July, August, that hasn't happened. $484,000 spent on design of a city hall that who knows whether it'll be built or not. Y'all have squandered taxpayers' money, and the taxpayers are tired of it. For that reason, I object to the increase in the tax rate that y'all have proposed. I would ask that y'all, I would ask that y'all not approve the proposed tax rate increase. And Drew, when you were kind enough to respond to my email about, well, if you, if you think that the tax rate shouldn't be increased because money needs to be squeezed out of the budget, where could it be squeezed? Lots of things. A million dollars going to tiers number three, that's the demo and rebuild of the east side of Jersey Village. I think that the original tier set about 500,000 a year, you could certainly cut that million down to 500,000. $10,000 for fireworks. Do we really need fireworks in Jersey Village? I think we have an ordinance that prevents it. 10 and 1/2 million for a new city hall, let's kick it down the road. And James, thank you for at least making the motion to amend the budget, to remove that 10 and 1/2 million, remove the 7 and 1/2 million, and delete the $20 million bond referendum. We don't need to be borrowing money. A lot of y'all have campaigned on the topic of, well, we're going to be debt-free in 10 years, and now we're sitting around because we made a bad decision on 290 because y'all are married to a bad decision.
I'm sorry, that's time, Simon. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have the next comment card from Michael Stenbridge.
We, we just need the lowest tax rate possible. I'm just gonna be pragmatist about this. We are low-income, and we flooded tax day, and we constantly fear flooding, and yada, yada, yada. But the city has done a lot of work, it's done a lot of flood mitigation work. I'm talking about the city, not the county. They done the Wall Street, y'all, y'all done the Wall Street, Birm, Crawford, Capri, all that jazz, and those are big pipes upstream of us. I'm not a flood project manager, I don't know what that's gonna do to downstream. Our thing is, we're from Lakeview to Beltway 8, and we did see county work going on at first, they did some culverts, they did some other stuff that we observed. They have extended our bank out behind our back backyard, out into the bayou with a, kind of a bulldozer freeway or something, and it's, it's actually, the land is wider, the bayou, that may make the bayou narrower, I don't know, but it's ugly, and it's a mosquito pool and all that, but the work was going on. Then it, then it proceeded from Lakeview up to Senate, north, upstream of us, but we haven't seen anything taking part lately, so we're concerned about that. We need the lowest possible tax rate. The, I know this is redundant, Mayor, you said that it would not be the .8999, or 88.8 cents, whatever. You know, we need that .69 rate or that .742 rate, if you could even go lower than that, because as far as we see, you know, I'm not saying the tiers could never help us, it might not be an option right now, it could be an option in the future. You know, those people need that money, that million dollars, because those houses have repeated, our houses have flooded repetitively, it's a mess, we flood really deep there. But the city expenditures have helped others. I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but it hasn't helped us, we're downstream, and so we, we just want the lowest tax rate possible, especially given our situation, and, you know, we, we don't really support the, the new city hall, the golf course clubhouse and all that, and the $20 million bonds, if there was a way to do flood mitigation or elevations or... If there was a way to do flood mitigation or elevations or reconstructions with the bond money, I don't know. We've been through so much. Usually, I, I don't support bonds, because that's debt and everything. But looking at our desperate situation, I don't know. But the city's spent a lot of money on elevations. They're part of elevations. FEMA pays most of it, mind you. And, and we paid property tax, school tax, sales tax, always on time, federal income tax, but we haven't enjoyed any of those FEMA benefits that the city has brought in elevating others. And the city does pay a smaller portion, a municipal portion sometimes on those elevations. Sometimes it's, you know, all federal. But we haven't enjoyed any of that. We haven't enjoyed any of the Wall Street, Birm projects. We're downstream. I don't, I don't think that's going to benefit us. And I'm not saying that that shouldn't happen for those people, but we need more. And so, obviously, we would be in favor of a lower tax rate, Mayor. So, the lowest that you can, whatever you can fathom. I think there's enough power, strength, morale here that, like you said, you will pass the lower rate. And I think you'll get a majority tonight. And so, we're looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. The next comment card I have is from Augie Gentelucci.
Appreciate the opportunity to speak. Just a second, what the first gentleman spoke about. The numbers are very confusing, and communication should be one of your primary responsibilities to the citizens of Jersey Village. I've been in Jersey Village now for about nine years. Love Jersey Village. The fire department, police department are second to none in the state, as far as I'm concerned. You know, every time there's been an incident, I live at the intersection of Senate and Congo, and that seems to be an area where people like, have a wide driveway, they like to come in there and park and break bottles from some years ago. But I'm here to talk about the tax rate. And so, when you look at the numbers, you were talking about a 16 and 1/2% increase in tax rate against a 2.5% decrease in property values, which makes it a net 19% increase against the tax base. Now, I understand, and I don't agree with the order, and I think we ought to be able to comment on any tax increase that's going against the city budget before you have an opportunity to make a motion, and maybe it's the state law, but as a citizen, and you're the elected officials, I think it's our right for you guys to hear what we need to say about that. You've indexed and you've referenced home values as one of your reasons for the tax increase, because there's a decrease. And that's how it's coming across to me. So are we going to index the tax rate so if home values increase? Because I guarantee you, mine didn't go down, right? That the tax rate's going to go down? Is this to set a precedent, and we should be considering an indexed tax rate? So if my home value goes up, my tax rate goes down, or on average? Because right now, you're doing a divergent-type income versus decreasing tax to increase net income from that, from my perspective. I think any tax rate, you referenced the American Revolution. I think you should reference T in the harbor as well, because that's what drove this country to be what it is today. And it was specifically around taxes and taxing a T. So the citizens don't like taxes. We don't want, we want to be able to pay our fair share, but it should not be something that just happens ad hoc without the citizens and the voters having a right against all tax increases. I'm against giving you guys a bandwidth of 16 and 1/2%. And I don't think that's right. I don't think the citizens can afford 16 and 1/2% every year, year after year after year. So I, you know, in closing, I'd just say, I'm against it. I think you guys should vote against the tax rate increase. And there should not be a cap that goes up to almost nine percent, you know, .99 or .888 tax level. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next comment card I have is from Mark Malloy.
Mark Malloy, 7803 Hamilton Circle, past city council member for the city of Jersey Village. And so, basically, you know, I said, I would like for the Jersey Village government to tell the Jersey Village taxpayers during this meeting what the total increase in all city employee salaries, wages, city-matched city employee pension contributions, and city-covered city employee healthcare premium costs from the 2020-2021 to budget to the 2021-22 JV proposed budget that will be voted on at tonight's city council meeting and approved. Will you tell the Jersey Village taxpayers during this meeting, before you vote, to approve the 2021-2022 Jersey Village city budget, the answer to the above question that I am asking? And anyway, I'm going to finish my information that I had read and didn't get to complete. The Jersey Village taxpayers need to get an independent certified public accountant to go over all years of the Jersey Meadows Golf Course Operations financials since the JV government purchased the golf course with certificates of obligation in the budget year 1999-2000 to see just how much of the JV citizens' money has been spent subsidizing the cost of the operating of the Jersey Meadows Municipal Golf Course. And then, I also want to talk about that I did attend the budget meeting on July 20th, 2021. And from attending that meeting, I, you know, listened to the council members talking about how they were going to try to fund projects for the city. And basically, you know, they were seeing that they weren't going to have enough revenue to do all the projects that they wanted to do. And so, what they ended up doing is they had discussion to try to consider holding a special election in November to ask the citizens if they wanted to approve a $20 million bond referendum. And then, they continued their discussion, and then they decided, well, maybe we'll move that to somewhere in January. And then, they took and they had more discussions, and then they decided to take and decide to move it to, well, let's maybe have it during the regular election in May. And so, from the discussions that I heard, there was concern that they could not fund the Golf Course Clubhouse Convention Center with the funds that they had without going out and asking the citizens to approve a $20 million bond referendum. And so, basically, what that means to the citizens of Jersey Village is, the city government, they want to have what they want. They want to take and have their, you know, the Golf Course Clubhouse Convention Center, and they want to have it now. Okay? And they want the citizens of Jersey Village to take on additional debt, which would be $20 million, plus the interest over, I think they were discussing a 20-year pay period of $8.2 million, to take and be able to have their Golf Course Clubhouse Convention Center. And I think that is very poor management of the city's funds to try to force the citizens to take on additional debt and pay $8.2 million to move some project that the citizens do not need. And I also read earlier that the golf course does not generate a positive revenue. It does not pay for its operations. If it was a regular business, it would not continue to exist. That's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. The last card I have for the public hearing is Judy Yarbury.
Hello, my name is Judy Yarbury. My husband and I have been residents of Jersey Village for 29 years. To our delight, our son and his family have moved to Jersey Village and obviously happy about that. Why do we live here? Same reason why everybody else does. We feel safe, and we feel like a community. Our home has retained most of its value, and we want it to stay that way. Let's talk about taxes. I'm really confused. I'm not a CPA. I'm not a finance major. However, I'm a businesswoman, and I do understand, and I do not object to paying reasonable taxes, spent wisely, as Jersey Village has historically done. Please use tax money to compensate our police, fire, and emergency services department to ensure that their compensation is at or above industry standard. Because face it, if you can't retain or recruit good people, speaks for itself. Use tax money to continue to improve the drainage, the infrastructure, the long-term flood mitigation. I believe that's money well spent. Let's get some tax incentives for better businesses, consistent businesses to mid to the high-level end, thus increasing sales tax revenue. And please, reasonable tax dollars to enhance our community facilities is money well spent. I, we, are absolutely not in favor of incurring $20 million in a debt election with an $8.6 million payout over 20, 20 years, is what is proposed. I am absolutely focused on what your role should be as opposed to build this fancy golf course house, which I'm not opposed to. The golf course is a very essential part of Jersey Village, absolutely. But what I believe is a priority for each one of you who have been elected and who manage the city. You've got this, this albatross over here that I am really looking forward to hearing where we are. That's where your focus needs to be. That's where our dollars have been. That's where a lot of people have been talking and speculating. Let's postpone the $20 million bond for a few years. I expect each and every one of you to continue to spend money wisely. Good risk management and business decisions. Remain transparent and keep us informed. As a side note, thank you, Simon, for what you said about our council members communicating. Since I'm retired, I have a little more time, and I do homework, and I do send emails. Thank you specifically to Bobby, Gary, and Drew for your response to my email to each and every one of you. I do believe it is your responsibility to at least acknowledge when a citizen communicates with you, whether you agree with them, whether you're busy or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. There being no one else desiring to speak, I now close the public hearing on the tax rate increase. Which brings us to item five, discuss and consider approval of a motion to set the tax rate for debt service for tax year 2021. And this has my name on it. Let's see. Adoption of the debt service tax rate must be a separate item on the agenda for the meeting. The council must adopt the debt service tax rate by official action, and the rate must equal the calculated and described debt service rate outlined in section 2604 E3C of the Tax Code. The staff recommends that council adopt the debt service tax rate of .131562 per $100 value for the tax year 2021. The suggested motion for this item is below. Any discussion on this item? If not, I would entertain a motion at this time, preferably in the form in the memo.
Move to approve setting the debt service tax rate of .131562 per $100 value for the year 2021.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor? Those against? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Okay. And this is where we get into the real meat of the discussion. Item six, discuss and consider approval of a motion to set the tax rate for maintenance and operation for tax year 2021. Adoption of the maintenance and operation tax rate must be a separate item on the agenda for the meeting. The adoption of this tax rate will take place after adopting the budget for the year. A maintenance and operation tax rate of .610938 per $100 value for tax year 2021 is needed to fund the 2021-2022 municipal budget. However, the governing body is permitted to set an MNO tax rate no higher than .756817, which is the voter approval MNO tax rate. And then, there is a proposed motion at the bottom of that memo when we make that decision. So, any discussion on this item? I will say this. I, I think that there were a lot of very good points made about communication in particular. It's something that Austin and I discussed at length on Friday after the question got raised, and, and that is extremely well-taken. We do have to sort of sort through what we can and can't do. One of the difficulties when you're talking about statutory requirements and notices that have to be put out, particularly when those statutes say word for word exactly what has to be in the notice, is that there is, to some degree, some limit to how we can change it. So when, when the notice says the proposed tax rate is, it's not like we can say, you know, we can't modify to say the proposed tax rate could be as high as, or the maximum tax rate could be. We don't have those options. But we do have the option, potentially, of providing additional information aside from those statutory notices to avoid confusion in the future. That being said, there's been a lot of talk about whether or not there are certain assets that could be sold in order to cover expenses for the city. I will say that you get into a dangerous situation when you have recurring operational expenses that you are then selling assets to pay for. Not to say that you shouldn't have available to you some buffer in certain instances, but if you're going to have a recurring cost every single year, at some point, that buffer you have, or that, that margin you have, is going to fall by the wayside. So, that's why a lot of times you'll have, for example, there was mention of Council Member Wasson asking, well, what part of the budget would you remove? That really is the discussion that has to happen, and that's the discussion we had during our budget hearings, our budget meetings. There are a lot of items that did come out of the budget that were originally in there that were proposed, in order to bring this down as low as we can. And so, I, you know, there are expenses that are going up across the board. We all know this. If you read the news, you know that inflation has been a real issue the last couple of months. Most projections have inflation at 5% or higher over the next 12 months. So, as a city, we have expenses that we have to meet. A lot of you have talked about how you love our police and our fire departments. That's where a lot of those increases are going, are towards their salaries and equipment and things of that nature. But there are also other expenses that go up along the way as well. We want to be able to keep our dedicated, talented city staff. And as a lot of you probably know, the private sector out there is really pushing to get people, and they're offering salaries that are higher and higher and higher every day. And I realize not everyone's in that situation, but if we want to continue to have staff in place, we have to meet market conditions. And so, that's a part of it as well. I don't, as Mark asked, I don't have the exact amount. I do know that those have not been set yet, I don't believe, for the following year, although they've been budgeted. Obviously, that gets based off performance and things of that nature. But these are all real costs. And if, if we decide that they're not expenses that we want to make, then we have to decide whether or not we want to sacrifice our staff. Do we want to sacrifice our services? There was one suggestion that we cut flood mitigation, that the, the tear-down and rebuild program should be curtailed in order to make this happen. And I think there's a lot of people out there who would differ on that. And that's the challenge we have, is that for some people, what's considered not a priority, for others may be a higher priority. priority, for others may be a higher priority. And the job of councils is to try to balance that and propose a budget that tries to keep taxes as low as possible while continuing to meet the high expectations that our citizens have, that they rightfully have. The key, though, is when you look at your tax bill, when it comes at the end of this year, go back and compare it to your tax bill in 2015. Some of you, it will be higher. The vast majority of you, it will be lower. Your taxes were lower last year than they were in 2015. They were lower the year before that than they were in 2015. We have continually made tax cuts every opportunity that we could. And we've kind of reached the point where this year, there was a need to come back a little bit. Now, we did increase the over 65 exemption. It's now double what it was just two years ago. Homestead exemption was increased just a few years ago as well. So, there are multitude of ways that we can adjust things in order to try to strike the right balance. As one person said during the public hearing, "They just want to ensure that the tax rates are set in a fair manner." And I think that's exactly what we're trying to do. We can have a difference of opinion as to what that is, but that was the goal that we had when we set out to do this. So, that's all I have to say about that. If anyone else has any other comments, they're welcome to provide them. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion at this time.
The only comment before I make the motion is, when you do go look at your taxes, make sure you break down what Jersey Village is costing you. Because when you get your tax bill from the county, there's a lot of other people and I don't know that your tax bill's going to go down overall. But if you go look at your Jersey Village tax rate, the exemptions that are in place, many, many, many of the homes in Jersey Village, your tax rates are going down. Not your tax rate, your total tax due is going to be less than it was last year, even though we're increasing by 3.79%. Because of all of the exemptions that we increased that I've fought for and Bobby's pushed for so many years, the total tax is still going down. When I looked at the budgets, it really does become a question of what do you cut? You can cut City Hall and you can cut the clubhouse, but most of that's paid out of the bond that's proposed. Then you start getting down into the supplementals and $10,000 for fireworks, even though I'm not a big fan, isn't going to make even a noticeable dent. And $1 million for TERS 3, if I touched $1 million in the Wall Street project, there'd be hell to pay because we don't touch flood mitigation funds. They're off limits. The point is, we want to continue the flood mitigation. So, I did look it up. Year-to-year inflation is 5.37%. We're going up by 3.79. It's more dollars, but it's less spending power. And I know that we're all feeling that. And unfortunately, inflation is coming hard like a freight train, so. I'm going to move that we approve ordinance, not ordinance.
That's just a motion.
Yeah. Motion that we approve.
2021-34.
I believe that.
We want to have the motion state that we approve setting the maintenance and operation tax rate of .610938 per $100 value for year 2021.
I make that motion for .610938.
Councilman, you have to include what the effective percentage increase is.
Sorry, Justin, that wasn't in the, I believe what we're looking for is a motion to approve setting the maintenance and operation rate of .610938 per $100 value for tax year 2021, which would be an effective property tax increase of 3.79%?
Yeah. And I'm sorry, there's numerous documents here, multiple things on this, but I've moved to approve the 3.79% increase.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those against? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Finally, item D7, consider ordinance number 2021-34 providing for the levy and collection of ad valorem taxes by the City of Jersey Village, Texas for the year 2021. Council is required to adopt the ordinance setting the tax rate for debt service, setting the tax rate for maintenance and operation, and setting the total tax rate for the year 2021. In setting the 2021 ad valorem tax rate, the governing body may not set a tax rate that exceeds the voter approval rate of .888379, which if set, is effectively a 28.57% increase in the tax rate compared to last year. In setting the rate, it should be noted that a rate of .7425, which is effectively a 3.79% increase in the tax rate compared to last year, is needed to fund the 2021-2022 municipal budget. Both rates exceed the no new revenue tax rate, but not the voter approval tax rate. The vote on the ordinance setting a tax rate that exceeds the no new revenue tax rate must be a record vote, and at least 60% of the members of the governing body must vote in favor of the ordinance. A motion, and there's a suggested motion, I won't read all of that. Any discussion on this particular item?
I just wanted to say that I appreciate Bobby, last budget workshop that we had, you bringing out the whiteboard so we could all really see an exact example of how this would influence all of the citizens. I think that always makes these abstract numbers a little more concrete. And so, we gave, he came up with this example house and what it would really, really cost this house with all of these proposed budgets for the tax increase. And I really want to say I appreciate that because it really solidified what I would drive to achieve. So, I just wanted to say I thank you for that. And I think restoring it to the historical rates, which aligns with the inflation, it makes the most sense for our city. It doesn't pay for everything, but it really does bring us a little closer to where we need to be. And so, I support that decision to restore it to historical standards.
I'll just, I'll just say, I wish we could find more room, as James alluded to. There are probably ways, and we've had discussions on those in our budget workshop, and there's a recording in minutes that we'll approve later that lists our discussions on those things. Overall, our taxes are going to go up, and a $300,000 home, the difference between what the current rate is and what you'll pay with 7425 with the 14% exemption is roughly $50. And if you're over 65, you're paying, if I carried the one correctly, it looks like you're paying $30 more. Now, that's still more money. Those are real dollars, real cents. And like many of you said, we have to make sure that we earn this tax increase and spend the money wisely. And, you know, our job is to make sure, and your job as a citizen is to make sure we do. So, I expect and want you guys to hold us accountable, and we need to hold our city and staff accountable that we do that. But one other thing before we make a motion. Mr. Malloy, I added it up. $836,197 are aligned with category 30 on 16 different departments within General Fund I. Of those, $772,474 are associated with police, communication, or fire department. So, I think we've all agreed, those are, one, the police have been without a salary increase for a while, and that's money well spent, I think. And given our lack of increased volunteerism in the fire department, just the way society has worked as of late, paying for part-time firefighters is well worth that money and gives us all a sense of comfort. So, I hope that answers your question. If not, I'll be happy to meet with you after the meeting and discuss further.
Thank you. That was some quick math. Any other discussion on this item? And if we're ready for a motion, I will read it since I have a script here that lays it out the way it needs to be done.
I actually got it right this time.
Oh, nevermind, go ahead, go right ahead.
Move to approve ordinance 2021-34 providing for the levy and collection of ad valorem taxes by the City of Jersey Village, Texas for the year 2021, providing for the date on which such taxes shall be due and payable, and providing for penalty and interest on all taxes not timely paid. I further move that the property taxes be increased by the adoption of the tax rate of 0.7425, which is effectively a 3.79% increase in the tax rate.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I will now call upon each council member by name to take the record vote. Once your name is called, answer aye to signify your approval of the motion, or nay to signify your disapproval. Councilmember Wasson, state your vote.
Yea. Aye.
You rebel. Councilmember Holden, state your vote. That actually, I promise you, I'm not Ron Burgundy. I don't normally just read what's on the teleprompter. Councilmember Shepherd, state your vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchum, state your vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton, state your vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Wubenhorst, state your vote.
Aye.
Motion carried. It seriously had that on there. Okay, that brings us finally to the City Manager's report. Austin, please.
Mayor and councilors, the report is in front of you. One item to note that is not in the report is, we worked with Congresswoman Fletcher's office on community-funded projects, and recently, the House passed $625,000 for the City of Jersey Village for the Seattle Street water project for water lines. It's awaiting action in the Senate, but we're hopeful that they'll approve that when they get back from recess. And happy to answer any other questions the council might have about the City Manager's
Any questions for the City Manager? And Austin, I believe we had that figure during the budget meetings. And so, in case anyone's saying you could have paid for the tax increase multiple times over with that amount, that's including that amount.
And that is for the water lines, which would be from the utility fund, not the general fund.
That's a good point. Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager? Nope, then we'll move on to the next item. Consent agenda. The following items are considered routine and nature by City Council will be enacted with one motion and vote. Does any member of council want to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion?
If I can, remove item number three, please.
Okay. Item number three will be considered following the consent agenda. Any other council member, does any council member wish to remove either of the two remaining consent agenda items? I would entertain a motion at this time, then.
Move we approve items one and two of the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those against? Any abstentions? The motion to approve the consent agenda passes. Which brings us to the one item that was pulled from the consent agenda. Consider resolution number 2021-54 authorizing the City Manager to enter into a lease purchase agreement with HP Financial Services for a new wide-format scanner slash printer. Bob Levens, IT Director.
Yes, council and mayor, mayor and council. This is a, basically replacing a five-year-old piece of equipment we have right now. The lease actually expires this month in August. The proposal in front of you tonight is to do a new lease on a new piece of equipment for another five years. This is going to basically end up costing us about $30 more a month than we're currently
Any questions for Bob Levens on this item?
No, I, I mean, printers, you know, are old yesterday, right? So, I mean, I see the authorization. I just want to make sure that we're spending money, so we want to make sure it's wise. Did we, is this the same, did we have an HP last time?
Yes, sir. This is basically replacing it with a comparable piece of equipment. It's a 44-inch wide, wide-format printer and a scanner, so we can scan those wide-format documents as well. That system was planned for a four-year lifecycle, I'm sorry, a five-year lifecycle, we'd have a five-year lease on that. And that lease included the maintenance on that if there was any warranty work or any repairs needed to be done there in that lifetime. It's coming off lease. We're actually going to be able to use that piece of equipment as a trade-in value on this new lease, so we'll be trading it back into HP and getting a new comparable system. And like I said, the lease payment's going to go up about $30 a month.
Thanks, Bob. Any other questions or discussion on this item? If not, I would entertain a motion at this time.
Move to approve resolution number 2021-54.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the resolution? Those against? Any abstentions? The resolution passes. Okay, that brings us to mayor and council comments. I'm going to start down at this end with Councilmember Mitchum.
I just wanted to reiterate the amount of thought and heart that goes into every decision that we make. I know Mark, I love him, he stayed the entire meeting for the budget workshop from beginning to end to really understand it. And I appreciate the citizens when they come. And like I said, he brought out the whiteboard and the amount of, like I said, thought and heart that goes into anything we do, it's not made lightly, and it comes with a lot of consideration and thought about others' opinions different than ours. And I really do appreciate all of council for having different ideas and opinions in a very collaborative and respected way. I wanted to give a shout out to Drew and Bobby for having a way with words. Your posts about anything that goes on, I wish I was as good as y'all for the way that you explain some of the things, like the tax rate law that we had to abide by. I'm continuing to learn from you guys and I really do appreciate everything you give to our city. And get vaccinated, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepherd.
I don't have any comments tonight.
Councilmember Wasson.
Brevity is not exactly my strong suit, but I'll try. One, this is, this sets the tone. The budget sets the tone for the city for the rest of the year. So, I appreciate everyone coming out tonight for your participation in the process during the workshops, during the planning, the setting of the exemptions, making your voice heard. I think that's extremely important to set the tone, and participation is key. Appreciate that. What I don't like are all the moving parts and seemingly things that are out of order, most of which is out of our control. What we can control, I think, said several times tonight, we owe clarity on the issue, and I think we can work on that and do a better job of explaining what goes where and why things are. And outside of the budget, it's hurricane season still, there's some storms in the Gulf. Just pay attention and stay prepared. Thanks, guys.
Councilmember Singleton.
I don't have any comments.
Councilmember Wubenhorst.
No comment.
Okay, great. Actually, I have to thank Bob Cabala for bringing up the question of, does a council member owe their constituents a simple, you know, take a poll, check the box? Or do they owe their judgment, their sort of taking in all of the facts and then making a call that may be popular, may not be popular? And I brought up Edmund Burke. I Googled it. I thought it just, if you'll, it's very brief, but if you'll indulge me for a moment. But this was a speech he gave to his constituents in Bristol on November 3, 1774. And if you don't know Edmund Burke, he's kind of considered the intellectual godfather of the modern sort of conservative political movement. But he told his constituents, "Certainly, gentlemen," keeping in mind that back then, voters were men, "Certainly, gentlemen, it ought to be the happiness and glory of a representative to live in the strictest union, the closest correspondence, and the most unreserved communication with his constituents. Their wishes ought to have great weight with him. Their opinion, high respect." Their opinion, high respect. Their business, unremitted attention. It is his duty to sacrifice his repose, his pleasures, his satisfactions to theirs, and above all ever and in all cases, to prefer their interests to his own. But his unbiased opinion, his mature judgment, his enlightened conscience, he ought not to sacrifice to you, to any man or to any set of men living. These he does not derive from your pleasure, no, nor from the law and the Constitution. They are a trust from providence for the abuse of which he is deeply answerable. Your representative owes you not his industry only, but his judgment, and he betrays instead of serving you if he sacrifices it to your opinion. Now, I think it's important to note there that we all should take into account the opinions and the concerns of our citizens. We should listen very, very closely, and we should make sure that we understand those concerns as well as we can. And that is part of the process of making a decision. It's not just collecting information, it's collecting opinions, collecting feedback from our citizens, because they may have some take or view on something that we may not have considered. But at the end of the day, I believe that our council owes you first and foremost their judgment once they have gone through that process. Not beforehand, but once they've gone through that process. And I think if we all do that, while understanding that at the end of the day, we do have to try to make the decision based on all the information that we believe is best, I think it will work out. And, you know, every two years, you guys get to decide whether or not we've done a good job of that or not, so we'll see how it all pans out. So, thank you so much for coming. Luckily, this is one of the shorter meetings, and so with that, meeting adjourned.